Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven P. M. Here at the City Council Chambers at City Hall for the regular meeting of the City Council. Call the meeting to order and entertain the roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Kangis.
Present.
Rothie.
Present.
Schneider.
Here.
Vote four.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to item C. Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Section D is the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion.
Motion of approval of the agenda is presented.
Second.
Moved by Myers, second by Drinkow. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The agenda is approved. Section E is the approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the March twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three study session minutes and the April three, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Rothie. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Those minutes are approved. Section F is public hearing. Item number one, this is the date, time, and place for a public here on a resolution twenty-three dash fifty-eight instituting proceedings to take additional action and approving the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation bond series two thousand and nineteen, general obligation bond series two thousand and twenty A, and general obligation bond series two thousand and twenty-one of the city of Waverly, Iowa. Mayor and council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Have you received any written or oral comments, Carla?
We have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any public comments from anybody that's joined us this evening? Seeing nobody rise, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-eight instituting proceedings to take additional action and approving the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation bonds series two thousand and nineteen, general obligation bonds series two thousand and twenty A, and general obligation bonds series two thousand and twenty-one of the city of Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Myers. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Vote four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, the resolution twenty-three dash fifty-eight is approved. Section J is proclamation for Arbor Day. I'll read the official proclamation that is being presented. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life, giving oxygen, and providing habitat to wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Adam Hoffman, Mayor of the city of Waverly, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the city of Waverly, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated the seventeenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-three. Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
The approval of proclamation is read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Kangis, second by Bergen. Further council or staff discussion?
I just have to note that since my son's almost done with high school now, that one of my favorite memories of him growing up was telling me that trees were important because they gave us oxygen, which gets the tough stains out. And I had to say, no, that's OxyClean. It's different.
Hey.
But hey, he was, he was at least partially in the right way.
Give him credit. I know that maybe Garrett wants to touch briefly. I don't, we're just awarded a Trees Forever Award.
Sure. I was gonna wait for you to add comments, but I'll, I'll do it now.
I'll give you the honor to do it now as we're talking about this.
Yep. Last week, both Paul Cheville and Eric Scherz attended luncheon in Ankeny for, let's see, it's for Tree City USA, and Waverly was awarded both the Tree City USA Award, that's the thirty-second year for Waverly, and then the twenty-fifth year that we received the Tree City Growth Award. So they were down there for the luncheon, got to accept the awards, got their picture in the paper, had a good old time. So, thank you.
Thank you for that information.
You bet.
Get that early in the meeting here before people quit watching on YouTube. They'll never hear about it. So, any further comments or items? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the proclamation is read. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Section H is public comments for items not on the agenda. Please leave your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any public comments this evening? Come on forward to the podium and state your name and address and share your comments.
Hello, everybody. My name is Eric Johnson, E.R.I.K. I live at three-ten Fifth Street Southwest, right here in town. I had a couple thoughts on my head, but I wanted to come here and address to you guys and first just say thank you for what you do and for your service, everybody. I've only been here a couple times, but I appreciate what you guys do. My, my family and I run Think Well Coffee, right off Bremer there, and on Mondays, I open to the public and people come in, drink coffee, and buy coffee and say hi. And someone was talking to me today about housing, you know, in Waverly. We're, we're, we had different opinions about development, about lots, about prices, and all that stuff, and he had made a comment about, well, if, if somebody didn't, wasn't upset about developing the old Irving site a couple years ago, stuff would have, you know, affordable housing would have been made there. And I was one of these in the neighborhood who didn't want there to be triplexes and townhomes built there. I mean, there's a, I was able to say a little bit then, a couple years ago when we looked at that, but I did actually, it made me feel like I should probably just say where I'm coming from on this because I think it's important. I think housing is, as you all know, I mean, housing is like, is crucial, and my family and I, we, we wouldn't have been able to buy a house here, we wouldn't have been able to live here if it weren't for a banker who, who gave exceptions to, you know, certain rules, and essentially, he put his own name on the note, which allowed the bank to give us the approval for the mortgage. And just luckily, we had tax returns that year from, you know, running our own business, and so we had this chunk of money that we have never otherwise had, and we had a banker who was willing to go to bat for us, and, and then a house popped up at that, you know, it was like in the one forty's, which where do you find a house in Waverly for one forty's? Well, when, when I heard you guys talking about or proposing to develop the Irving site and talking about houses being affordable, you know, and there's two twenty-five, two fifty right in there, which we all know in this market is affordable, or more affordable. And I think that's, that's where I'm coming from, is I think there's a lot of people who, by where they went to school, how much debt they have, do they have car loans, do they have kids, who's working, who's not working, housing is not affordable, and there is a whole swath of people who, who can't live here and who can't be a part of this community, and it's not just here. I mean, it's all over. We, we moved here from Vermont, and I would say Vermont is, you know, thirty years ahead down this line in terms of stuff not being affordable. We barely, I mean, we moved from Vermont because we couldn't make a living there, and I, you know, I'm, I'm working, contributing, doing whatever we can. We're very, we, we're budget oriented, we don't waste any money, I don't waste, I don't waste a penny, and it is so difficult to just have a family, to do honest work, to try to contribute to a place, and to have no place to, to live. We've lived in trailer homes before, we've lived, we've lived in a lot of rentals, we've never, we're renting from Whortburg when we first moved here. So, there's two things that, that I like to say, I know I'm limited on time, but the first thing is our housing developments as communities shape who gets to live here, and, you know, you look historically and there's different ways that we can find who can live places, but I, I do just want to say, like, how much is a lot for land, how much are the building materials, how, what kind of homes are we building? This, this structures the people who can even walk in and make it and live in any community. And housing for, let's say, two fifty, those people who qualify for that, they have a lot of places where they, they can go and that they can get houses. People who can afford a hundred thousand dollar mortgage, you have no place, there's no place for us to go. And I want to defend the people who are in my spot of, like, I'm not, I'm not somebody who's, you know, I don't live off the system, I'm not trying to look for my own personal benefit where I go. I am trying to produce, I'm trying to take care of people, and trying to live with integrity, and I'm finding there isn't a lot of space for, for us. And housing is this thing where it, I can go to the thrift store and I can buy clothes, I can buy used cars and not have a loan, and I can befriend mechanics and figure out how to fix some things on myself and repair things on my own home. I cannot buy a home. I can't buy a home, unless, I mean, the only reason why we have a home is because we were given an exception. So, one thing that I'm trying to say is how we make our developments shapes who gets to be here. The Irving School Site is one of these sites where it's like, this is a kind of a funky chunk of land, it's a weird shape, you got the dry run right there, it's kind of give the walking path, it's in an old neighborhood, so it's just a unique spot. But the way that we put in things there are going to decide who, who goes there, and I, it was a point that I was trying to make a couple years ago, which is by, by the homes that we put there, it's going to dictate who gets to be there, and I would love it if our city could make, could think creatively, could think outside of the box. How do we develop sites? It doesn't have to be the Irving School Site, but how do we develop housing that actually addresses the situation, which is affordability? I understand that stuff is expensive, I know the building costs are up, so I'm, I'm not living in La La Land, but there are ways that we as a community can choose to develop things and rethink, and I just have to say, we are walking into a future that is going to look drastically different than what the last thirty years looked like, and we got to start thinking, how do we build, and how do we gather, and how do we structure development in ways that is addressing our future concerns? And I would love it if people who are in my shoes and my family could be considered, you know, when development is being made, just not those folks who are in the two fifty to three hundred or one, two hundred to three hundred. I feel like there's a lot, a lot for those people, and there's many places for them to go, and so I would, I'd love, I would just wanted you guys to, I don't know, I wanted to say that all the way through because I, you got a little, a little prickly this morning at the coffee shop, so I wanted to, it's like, oh, man, I'm like, definitely not on the side of trying to get rid of affordable housing in this town or in my neighborhood. I, I would like to be a part of solving that, so, okay. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing nobody rise, we'll move forward with the consent calendar. Section I. Item one is the pay request from Lodge Construction Incorporated for the Tenth Avenue Southwest Trail Extension for the amount of one thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Item two is a pay request from WHKS Incorporated for the tail race wall removal for the amount of nine thousand one hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents. Item three is a pay request from Cardinal Construction Incorporated for Cedar River Park Phase Three for the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. Item four is a pay request from Mott Construction Incorporated for the Cedar River Park Phase Three for the amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Item five is a pay request from Staggy Construction for the Cedar River Park Phase Two for the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Item six is a pay request from Staggy Construction for the Waverly Parks Maintenance Office remodel for the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and one cent. Item seven is a pay request to MSA Professional Services Incorporated for the Waverly Comprehensive Plan Bike and Pedestrian Trail Plan and Park and Open Space Plan Project for the amount of twenty thousand dollars, and item eight is a Class C alcohol license for the wooden foot. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any?
I just have one quick question. It looks like this is the last payment to MSA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the same. Hearing none. Motion carries for the approval of the consent calendar. Section J is the regular business. Item number one, resolution twenty-three dash fifty-nine approving the upper story facade improvement rebates to be paid in this fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-nine, a resolution approving the upper story facade improvements rebates to be paid in this fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-nine is approved. Item number two is the third and final reading of ordinance eleven twenty-two rescinding the acceptance of the dedication of Tagalong Trail and Heritage Hollow as city streets and vacating and conveying the rights of way. Entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance eleven twenty-two rescinding the acceptance of the dedication of Tagalong Trail and Heritage Hollow as city streets and vacating and conveying the rights of way to the owner, J&amp;J Investments LLC, without consideration.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Drinkow. Council discussion, if any?
I just wanted to say, I thought the supporting documents were really helpful, including the letter from the attorney for the other party. It was, made things much more clear.
Thank you. Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, no, none absent. The third and final reading of ordinance eleven twenty-two is approved. Item three is resolution twenty-three dash sixty, a resolution setting a bid letting date utilizing online bidding in accordance with the plans and specifications and setting a public hearing date to approve the Waverly Municipal Airport South Tea Hangar Taxi Lane Reconstruction Project Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimated Costs. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-three dash sixty, a resolution setting a bid letting date for May eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three, utilizing online bidding through Quest, CDN in accordance with the plans and specifications, and setting a public hearing date for June five, two thousand and twenty-three, to review the Waverly Municipal Airport South Tea Hangar Taxi Lane Reconstruction Project Plans, Specification, Form of Contract, and Estimated Costs.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Kangis. Council discussion, if any?
So just to clarify, this is the part just between the hangars, that section, not the, not the other turnaround area, just the, okay.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Kangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. Resolution twenty-three dash sixty is approved. Item number four is resolution twenty-three dash sixty-one awarding the citywide asphalt patching two thousand and twenty-three project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-three dash sixty-one, a resolution awarding the citywide asphalt patching two thousand and twenty-three project to Heartland Asphalt of Mason City, Iowa for the bid amount of twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Schneider. Council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangis.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-one is approved. Item five is resolution twenty-three dash sixty-two approving a team services proposal, proposal for services to provide Iowa Department of Transportation concrete plant monitoring and material testing services. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-three dash sixty-two, a resolution approving a team services proposal for services to provide Iowa Department of Transportation, IDOT, concrete plant monitoring, and material testing services for an estimated amount of five thousand to ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Myers. Council discussion.
How often do we have to monitor the concrete when we put it in? Just, I, I just don't remember seeing this a lot.
So when we get into like federal and state funded projects, it's a requirement that we basically really ramp up our material testing program, and so the ready-mix plant will perform plant inspection, but we have to provide a plant monitor. Because our state and federally funded projects are kind of few and far between, we reach out to a testing company like Team Services that are doing this day in, day out, throughout the year, to help provide those services.
So the information said the last time we did it was when we redid First, First Street?
Correct.
Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-two is approved. Item six is resolution twenty-three dash sixty-three approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Blacktop Service Company and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract for the Batuminus Seal Coat Program two thousand and twenty-three. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-three dash sixty-three, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Blacktop Service Company for the Batuminus Seal Coat Program two thousand and twenty-three for a total cost of two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety-six, and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Council discussion. I'm always eager to see who wants to make the motion and just say Batuminus.
We've all gotten better at pronouncing that word.
That's right.
Six years ago, I didn't know how to pronounce it. Now I do.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-three is approved. Item seven is the first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-three repealing and replacing Waverly Municipal Code, Chapter seventy-four, Water Works, and setting a public hearing date. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-three, an ordinance repealing, repealing and replacing the Waverly Municipal Code, Chapter seventy-four, with a new Chapter seventy-four, Water Works, and setting public hearing for May one, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven o'clock P. M. in the City Council Chambers.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Vote four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. The first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-three is approved. Item eight is the first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-four repealing and replacing Waverly Municipal Code, Chapter seventy-five, wastewater facilities, and setting a public hearing date. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-four, an ordinance repealing and replacing the Waverly Municipal Code, Chapter seventy-five, with a new Chapter seventy-five, wastewater facilities, and setting a public hearing for May first, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P. M. in the City Council Chambers. Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Kangis. Council discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero. The first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-four is approved. Item nine is the first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-five repealing and replacing Waverly Municipal Code, Chapter seventy-eight, water and sewer connection fees, and setting a public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-five, an ordinance repealing and replacing the Waverly Municipal Code, Chapter seventy-eight, with a new Chapter seventy-eight, water and sewer connection fees, and setting a public hearing for May first, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P. M. in the City Council Chambers.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any?
That's when we're, when we're done with all of these repealing and replacings, we're going to have a nice shiny, brand-new Waverly Municipal Code.
There's a lot yet to come.
Well, we've been doing this for the last couple months and a few more months left.
We already got through the weeds, so.
Yeah. I recall one of these is like, the last time it was updated was three years ago. I mean, these get, like, they're always finding things that need to be fixed.
Well, some of it are changes in regulations, changes.
Right.
It just, it varies in why you have to do it.
Yes.
We don't enjoy it either, but, you know, you have to.
What do you mean, we don't enjoy it?
No, we don't enjoy it. Right now, it's a lot to do, so appreciate Justin.
I was like, I, I like to buy Water Works and Monopoly, but I'm not sure about the wastewater.
Pays well.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffey.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, the first reading of ordinance eleven twenty-five is approved. Brings us to item ten, approval of mayoral appointments. Approve the following mayoral appointment. Mr. John Meyer is reappointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring May first of 2028.
I will move approval of the mayoral appointments, as read by the mayor. Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Kangas, council discussion, if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Into section K, reports from boards and commissions, two of them, one is the monthly financials for March of 2023, and item two is Bremer Waverly Law Enforcement Board minutes of March thirteenth of 2023. Moves us to section L, staff updates.
Yes, sir, we have a few tonight.
Okay.
All right, well, yesterday, we had the dog Easter egg hunt. The dogs that were there had a lot of fun. We only had about ten dogs, but the weather conditions obviously were not great. So we're hoping to grab some traction for next year because this is the first year that we've had it after a kind of a three-year hiatus, so we're hopeful for that. But I do want to thank Ann and Brian for coming out and helping hide eggs, do the announcements, that kind of stuff, and Ann helped stuff eggs on Thursday. And thank you to James as well for coming out and helping us yesterday because, like I said, it was not great conditions, so.
Dog, dog.
But again, the dogs had a great time. Kind of hand in hand with Arbor Day proclamation earlier, we are having our planting day on May third with the middle schoolers. We're going to be down to about fifty, fifty-five trees this year because frankly, in the last five years, we've put a lot of trees in the ground and it's getting tougher and tougher to take care of all of them in their younger years. So we're only doing fifty this year. If anyone would like to come out and help lead a group, more than welcome to. We'll be down at the middle school at about eight fifteen on Wednesday, May sixth. It'll be about two hour.
May third.
May third.
I'm sorry, May third, thank you. It'll be about a two-hour commitment or so. That brings me into May sixth, sorry about that. Art walk back in Coleman Park on May sixth. If anyone would like to volunteer for that, feel free to let myself or the chamber know. We do need some volunteers still for the booths, some help with setup and takedown, so if anyone's interested, yeah, just let me know. And it sounds like May sixth is going to be a pretty busy day all around, so I'll have some more announcements at study session next week on that, so, thank you.
Just another reminder, Special Collection Week starts next week, runs through the twenty-eighth, and then the yard waste pickup runs twenty-fourth through the fifth, so it's two weeks long. You can email publicservices@waverlyia.com to sign up or just call the office and get on the list. We try to do it on the days you pick up for yard waste, but there's always times we make exceptions and try to work things out.
Excellent.
Zoe F. tonight, sir.
Thank you. City council comments.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Bergen.
So I had a question about the bike trail and our new bridge, the culvert there at the Cedar River Parkway. That was recently repaired. I think it was sinking into the ground, so the approaches coming from either end had a large bump and they came and I don't know if they filed it down or they put new patching in. I suppose, my question is, it's a fairly new bridge, so I'm surprised that it's needing this kind of maintenance so early in its lifespan. So I'm kind of curious if someone can, I don't know, shed a little light on if this is the sort of thing we expect from new bridges or not.
Are you talking about the tunnel, Brian?
The tunnel, yeah, the culvert, yeah, the tunnel, so.
I can kind of respond to that.
Okay.
Yes, it's a very common occurrence all across the state that inevitably, the state highways, county roads, wherever your bridge approach is, inevitably there is some settlement where you have building material placed up against the back wall. There are, for decades, there's been research going on, on ways to address and try to mitigate those types of issues and concerns, but it can be a very common occurrence across the state and the nation. So it's been about four years now since that culvert was put in. We do not tie those approach slabs into the culvert there. They're expected to be able to move independently. And because of that, yes, you can have some differential settlement that leads to the natural bump itself.
The cost of this repair, is this just something that we absorb or is it something that we planned for or?
So on this project, we had a two-year maintenance guarantee and the project was completed forty years ago.
So, yes, we had to pay for it ourselves?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's all. The only other thing is, anyone who'd like to discuss city politics, I will be at the Bremer Avenue Brewery, you can come have a beer with me afterwards.
Just wanted to piggyback onto Eric's comments on affordable housing. You know, I think there's some small things we can do, whether it moves the needle a lot, I don't know, but I think, you know, Bill, at the next economic development meeting, I'd like to have a really good discussion about builder, building incentives and see if there's something that we can come up with that we could bring to council through the, I think now's the time to, you know, to strike. We've got, housing inflation is pretty hot right now, so that's going to, you know, incentivize new builders to build in markets like this, so we just got to get the builders to go, so that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Drinkow.
Well, I would like to congratulate Justin on the reconfiguration at the yard waste site. Having the attendance shack on the left side rather than the right side is great for people like me who have pickups that do not have electric windows, leaning all the way across the cab and trying to crank the window down so I could talk to the attendant, was a rather painful thing to do a lot of times. So I think that's going to work out very well and I hope that the attendants appreciate that also, but I know that the customers that drive up there certainly appreciate it, so thank you.
The people that drive those postal vehicles, now what do they do?
Yeah.
Mr. Raffey.
Just wanted to thank the Lions Club for Pancake Breakfast Sunday morning, it was the place to see and be seen, so best bargain for breakfast in town. Anybody who likes to golf, if the weather ever starts cooperating, the Exchange Club, of which I'm a member, is sponsoring a fundraising golf tournament, May thirteenth, so you can get information on the golf course website or just by calling the pro shop. But it's one of our biggest fundraisers, the club puts between, typically between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars in donations back into various nonprofits, and this is one of our major fundraisers, so we appreciate having a full slate of golfers that day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Wolford.
I just want to say, I appreciate Eric coming today and discussing some of the, I guess, housing needs and his opinion on those. I share the same concern and opinion. So again, I appreciate you coming up and talking. I also understand there are still some open spots on the Human Equity and Diversity Commission, so encourage anybody to apply.
Thank you. Mr. Kangas.
I'm good today.
You're good today. The only thing I had was, I had a resident communicate with me about the corner at Heritage Way, West Bremer Avenue, Twentieth Street Northwest, that whole intersection out by Redeemer Pizza Ranch, and just heeding extra caution, especially at times where pedestrians are headed to school, from school, to church, to Pizza Ranch, you know, that whole thing there, he's seen and witnessed several near misses, he's witnessed vehicles, just not aware that there's even a stop sign, you know, out there, and it hasn't depended on which way a person is going. So just bringing that to light, that we want to prevent tragedy from happening, you know, everybody wants to say, well, put up flashing lights or put up a stoplight there, and we know that that can be several hundred thousands of dollars to get accomplished, which may